You ready?
Two thousand eight. I think it's eight, June eighth of two thousand eight. I thought it was June.
Lisa, you good?
I remember, I think it was maybe the eighth I was floating a boat down Main Street.
Okay. All righty, it's five P M. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. All right, well, that was way loud. We'll begin with a quick roll call, Mr. Barton. Mr. Fresh Air, Dr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Chapman. Dr. Manning, everybody's here. Except Dustin Art, we'll go to the pledge. Everybody will stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All righty, Lisa, do we have any delegation? Okay. All right, that'll move us into reports, and we'll start with recognition of spelling bee winners. Dr. Manning.
Okay, we're just going to go right down the list here. In fact, we have the students come up and get a picture taken with me. Appreciate that. We've got a certificate of achievement, first place Gilmer County Spelling Bee, James Matson. Certificate of achievement to certify Ashton Lawson for winning second place Gilmer County Spelling Bee. Certificate of achievement, this will certify Ryder Tomlin for winning third place Gilmer County Spelling Bee. Certificate of achievement, this will certify Reagan Morgan for winning fourth place Gilmer County School Spelling Bee. Here we go. Certificate of achievement to certify Bentley Armstrong for winning fifth place Gilmer County Spelling Bee.
Great job, guys.
Yeah. Great job. All righty, you are more welcome to stay or you can leave at this time. It doesn't matter. Okay.
Saw that jersey on, yeah.
Congratulations again.
All righty, that'll move us out of reports, and we'll begin with the consent agenda and start with the minutes.
Make motion to approve minutes of January twenty seventh.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. All righty, that'll move us into bills for payment. Ginger, you have the floor.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hello.
I reviewed these twice. I don't see anything where it's jumping out. I mean, does anybody have questions about any of the bills? Everything's pretty straightforward, the normal utilities. There's been some travel that was on here. One thing I wanted to call your attention to, we do have a national board, spelled wrong, but national board reimbursement on here. That is paid through us, but it is a direct grant from the Department of Education. That pays for some of the schooling or the classes that's required. So they apply to the Department of Education, Department of Education subsidy and grant, and then we pay the employee. So that's a, that's a flow through. Any else have a question?
No.
Make a motion to approve the bills for payment?
Second.
All righty, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills for payment as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to budget supplements and transfers.
We have a few this time, not nearly as many as the last time. Same, since you feel like if you had two weeks ago, just were adding to the budget with the green papers, the supplements, and we're just rearranging funds with the white ones. So to more appropriately spend the money.
Make a motion to approve the budget supplements and transfers as presented?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the budget supplements and transfers as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. And we'll go to open enrollment. Dr. Manning.
This is to approve an open enrollment for Madison Moyers, fourth grade student from Braxton County.
Make a motion to approve the enrollment as presented.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the open enrollment as presented. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. That'll take us into new business, and we'll start with approval of bus purchase. Dr. Manning.
And this is a part of our yearly funds that we receive to purchase new buses. And you, you guys have the, the letter that our transportation director wrote requesting Matheny Motor Truck Company for the purchase of a seventy-seven passenger Thomas Safety Liner Handicap School Bus with A C. The total cost there would be a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine, and it would be paid for out of our bus replacement money. Of course, that comes in every year. So I recommend making a motion to approve the letter of intent to Matheny Motor Truck Company for the purchase of a seventy-seven passenger Thomas Safety Liner Handicap School Bus with A C for a hundred and fifty-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the purchase of a new bus, seventy-seven passenger Thomas Safety Liner, hang with handicap with A C. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion?
Is that a typical sized bus? That seems really, that's a big one, isn't it?
That's about a typical bus, seventy-seven passenger.
I guess when you pack a bunch of football players, it makes a bus feel really small sometimes. And it seems really big, seventy-seven. That must be like three of them sitting in a seat or something.
Three of a seat, yeah.
Yeah.
And it's not electric.
Yeah.
Right? Well, okay. Well, I'm, I'm reading that paper. I'm reading this paper, and it had said electric bus, and I thought, oh, wait a minute.
That'd been like three or four hundred thousand.
Okay, any further discussion?
No, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye. 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 Any, any, shoot, any abstention? All right, motion carries. All right. So we'll go to out-of-state field trip requests, senior trip, May eighteenth through the twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Dr. Manning.
This is their senior trip. They will be going to Virginia Beach in Bus Gardens. And we've done this several times. They use, they raise money to get those kids to take a charter bus. We use G S U's charter bus to take the kids down, and it's kind of a one last trip for our seniors together. And they go to Virginia Beach for a day or two, and then they go to Bus Gardens. So I recommend making a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for the seniors to Virginia Beach and Bus Gardens as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the superintendent's recommendation for the out-of-state field trip request for the seniors to Virginia Beach and Bus Gardens as requested. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to out-of-state field trip request, F F A land judging team, April twenty-fourth through May the third. Dr. Manning.
This is a, to our national land judging contest. Been there several times. Students usually do pretty well out there. Students will evaluate soil, slope, and texture at various sites for land use, and it's part of our soil science curriculum. And I recommend making a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip request for F F A land judging team to attend Oklahoma City Land Judging Contest as requested.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept superintendent's recommendation on the out-of-state field trip request for the Gilmer County F F A land judging team to go to Oklahoma City for the land judging competition as requested. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion?
Nope, it was proud. They always do a really good job. Let's keep it up. Yep.
Yep. All righty, and no further discussion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, and to approval to place new policy on review, policy eighty-seven hundred. Dr. Manning.
This is a new policy sent from Neola with the latest legislative update revisions. And without getting into too much detail, I recommend just making a motion to place the policy eighty-seven hundred on thirty-day review and comment period.
You don't want to read it, Chase?
I'm, I'm not the expert. I do have experts in the room that would be willing to talk about this policy.
So moved. I'll just so move it. We'll just go along with it.
I'm not an expert in that area, I will admit.
It's a policy for lactating employees. It gives them a private place to.
It, it does.
All right, so I've got a motion to approve. Is there a second? There's a second. All right, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve or to place policy eighty-seven hundred on thirty-day review and comment. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, that'll take us to personnel.
Professional section, approval for Nicole Moyers and Caitlin Looney, substitute teacher.
Make a motion to approve professional section of the personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the professional section of the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. On to service.
Service, this is a motion to accept the service portion. This would be resignation, bus operator Patrick Buckner, effective January thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and a resignation for Brittany Fincham as custodian Gilmer County Elementary School.
Make a motion to approve the service portion of personnel agenda.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the service portion of the personnel agenda. Is there any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right, on to extracurricular.
Recommendation to hire Thomas Hamrick, auxiliary mini-titan baseball coach.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to accept the extracurricular portion of the personnel agenda. Any further discussion or amendments to that made motion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. All right. That'll take us into continuous improvement, and we'll have an academic data presentation. Ms. West.
Hello?
Hello, Ms. West.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The packet I just gave you is I Ready data. This is for our K through eighth graders. So let me explain the various reports that I've included. There are two. One is diagnostic, which you are used to looking at, and then I've added a new one tonight called the growth report. So on the front page, we're looking at reading first, and you can see the district information. The first, the first benchmark is faded. So when you're starting from the top and you come down to the first color bar, that is mid-year data, and just beneath it was beginning of year. It's a little faded. So right there, you can see that there has been growth across the county, K through the eighth grade, in the content area of reading. When you come down mid-page, you can see the domains that are tested under reading, including phonological awareness, phonics, high-frequency words, vocabulary, comprehension. And then comprehension is broken into literature and informational. And again, the faded is the original beginning of year, and the darker, more bold, is the most current. You continue to come down to the bottom of the page, and that is strictly the elementary score. Mid-year is the darker, and just beneath is beginning. And if you turn to the next page, you can see the middle school data. If you'll go to the next page, we're going to break it down by grade levels in our two buildings. So this is the same report, diagnostic, and it's reading, but we're only now looking at your elementary. So you can see for the elementary, they're at the top, they're middle of the year data versus their beginning. Come down through the domains in the middle, and then you can look at kindergarten. The next page is grade one through five. I will say that we did assess the math first, and in assessing the math first, when we went to assess our reading, of course, we had a Plan A, and then the winter storms happened. We ended up on Plan D before we actually got it rolling. We had some students who began their reading assessment on a Thursday. Friday was a planned off day, of course, Saturday, Sunday. Monday, we were off. Tuesday was a snow day, and they did not return to their reading tests until Wednesday. And of course, that is not best practice. So that, that is a factor. But we do, we do see growth.
Yeah, I mean, for as rough as the situation was.
Yes.
The weather.
Yes.
Please to still see the growth.
And we had some illness, so sometimes these were not given by the, the general ed or special ed teacher. It was a substitute that was in the room. And that, that makes a difference with data. The tone that a teacher that they're used to kind of sets when it comes to a benchmark versus someone who is subbing. We appreciate our subs and all that they do. If you go to the next page, this is the new one. This has the blue bars on it. This is called the growth report. Two weeks ago, we had professional development with I Ready. They joined us virtually throughout our teachers' planning periods. So K through five, and then we went to the middle school, six through eight. And so what you're looking at here typically, when we are mid-year, if a student is making growth, well, they should be at fifty percent. We're halfway through the year. We've taught half of our standards, so fifty is the goal. And if you go down by grade level, you can see that overall kindergarten, first grade, second grade, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade hit that fifty percent growth, which is typical. Now, there is another column just over from that. That is called the stretch. And when we're looking, when we break this down by students, we have students who have already hit a hundred percent or higher on their typical. And so they've started working on that stretch growth. And what I Ready has shared with us, if I am a second grader and I am two grade levels below, and I hit my stretch growth by end of second grade, and I go to third grade, and I hit my stretch growth by end of third grade, I will be on grade level, fourth grade. That's another layer of conversation our teachers are having with students. Because we have students who hit the typical, they are more than halfway on their stretch for this school year. And if we can push and get that stretch growth, then next year... So we're excited.
Yeah.
Again, if we could drill down and show you some of those, some of those students, yeah.
One of the things they mentioned in the conference was that kids that weren't meeting grade level twenty days during the summer really helped them capture that. So I think our summer program really plays into that.
Yep. And if you, if we turn to the next page, we'll now go to the middle school reading data. And again, you can see at the top, it's the most current versus beginning of year for sixth through eighth grade. Middle of the page, it breaks it down by domains. And then it breaks it down, sixth grade is at the bottom, seventh and eighth is on the next page. And again, this is still the reading. When you go to growth report, with reading in our middle school, you can see that all three grade levels, grade six, seven, eight, hit at least fifty percent. Now, there are a couple of grade levels that have gone beyond a hundred percent. And you may think, why? How is that possible? Well, if I took the test in August, and I really didn't care, and I really didn't try, and now I'm really giving my best effort, I probably am giving a truer score. And so that impacts that overall. And there, there again, if we go individually and have conversations with students about their growth. So again...
And that's some of the things our interventionists are doing, or having, having the intervention conversations, which it's made a pretty dramatic difference in their growth.
Yes. And again, once we hit that typical, we want to go to the stretch column and see where we are with stretch. The, the next page is a quad, and this was part of our professional learning. So when teachers are looking at students by name, did this student make fifty percent or more progress? Are they on grade level, above grade level? They go in what is called Quad One, which is in your upper right corner. Yep, right. Then just across from that, this is Quad Two, the purple. And these are kids who, yes, I have hit more than fifty percent, but I'm still a grade level or two grade levels below. And when we divide this, and we put our yellow here, these are your bubble kids. These are those kids that are very close to being green. And that made it very clear for our teachers, again, those who are growing based on what we're doing. They just need it more. And again, this speaks to science of reading, where our students, we have some who get it after five times. We have some who need it fifty times, and then we have some who need it a hundred and fifty times. And so this is another way for us to see who, where. Teachers can then take the kids that are in this quad. They can create a reporting group in I Ready, and it gives them very specific prerequisites skills those students are missing in either reading or math. It gives very specific lessons that those students need, and all the resources there for teachers to use. And that was part of the P B that we had two weeks ago with our way. And the teachers were very excited. The interventionists were very excited to go deeper. And so that is why I want to share that feeling with you. So that's the look at reading. And now we're going to switch here and we go to math, and then K through eight. First page we see is district overall, how we are performing, and then the breakdown at the bottom, elementary and high school, grade six through eight. Little here is the darker, and then that is the beginning of year. And again, the domains in math that we're looking at, numbers and operations, algebraic, algebra and algebraic thinking, measurement and data, and geometry. The elementary is really gaining. Again, our teachers are using some new core curriculum this year to be a doctor's assistant. How you do that in math and numerics. We are seeing the implementation more of building classrooms as well as number talk. Talking about numbers, taking the time to talk about, to talk about numbers. And you go to the next page, this is the breakdown only of the elementary, and your library levels. K and one, and then two, three, four, and five are on the next page. Then you come to the blue bars. Again, this is the growth report, and the focus here is math. Again, as a school wanting to hit that fifty percent on, and then it breaks down by grade, who hits the fifty, and then how is our stretch growth? And if I were to click on, for example, grade K, it would give me every number card. And there again, by name, I can see student data. When you finish with the growth report of the elementary, we're back to the diagnosis overall view of the middle school, sixth through eighth grade. And geometry tends to be a set of standards that teachers lay and teach just before state assessment. Part of that is based on the number of geometry standards compared to all of the other standards in there. Part of that is how much of the general blueprint is based on geometry. So there's lots of reasoning for that. Seventh grade still struggling.
Seventh grade still struggling.
Yes. And again, just having the time, getting this, there's just a lot there. There's a lot. So again, the conversations that are taking place, our teachers and our interventionists having those data talks. And one of the things that was pointed out, because the presenter that presented to our middle school teacher, she herself is a former middle school teacher and the parents of her, she was my student. So she was ideal to talk to before our middle school professional learning. And she called out the fact that the rosters will roll over the summer. And then there is a place where we can go and look at historical data. And teachers can pull up, even though you're coming to me and I don't really know who has an eighth grader, I can go back and see your seventh grade I-Ready score in math in April next. And we can have that conversation before you take the first benchmark. Because if I score too low on that first, I ready assigned the lessons that maybe I didn't really need. And then I'm just wasting my time. So we need to make sure our kids are, I don't know. They can the first benchmark seriously and then delving into those assignments. And again, another quad sheet because we did the same work on the math side. When it comes to ninth through 12th grade, our seniors have taken or are working to take the I-Exel the second time. So we've got two data points for them. But our ninth through 11th graders have switched to mastery class. And I didn't know if you wanted me to show you a little bit of mastery prep this evening, what that platform looks like a little bit. I can't really delve into the data yet. It's not set up quite like I-Ready. I'll have to, my teacher and then by certain class periods delve in and find that. Then I would be happy to show you the platform and what we're utilizing.
You have the floor, I say go ahead, go for it.
Can I ask a question first?
Absolutely.
Yes, so in our last meeting, we were talking about the third grade class and retention in the third grade class. So what do these numbers show as far as that third grade class? Like where are we, like?
And that doesn't take effect until July 1st.
That would be our.
That would be next year's class, not this year's.
Excuse me. It'd be the following year after that. It doesn't take effect until July 2026. So it's our current first grade class.
Current first grade class.
And I do have the numbers on those if you guys want to hear them.
I was just kind of curious, like by looking at this, what would, like how much concern? Like let's say for a 40 or how much concern would we have?
So this is a long, lengthy explanation and I'm having Howard, because this is an issue. I'm sure you guys understand it's an issue everywhere. There's a vast, there is a vast number of students that could be retained. And I don't think our.
I think they told us like 30% at the meeting.
I don't think our, I don't think our public quite understands about what House Bill 3035 could, could do. So the first thing, and I've got this and any of you guys that would like to have this, you're more than welcome to make a copy. But in-house Bill 3035, it states effective for the school year beginning July 1, 2026 and thereafter, a public school student generally demonstrates a minimal understanding of the ability to apply grade level, English, language arts, mathematics and abilities or both as indicated on the West Virginia General Summit of Assessment, relative to the West Virginia College and Career Standards at the end of the third grade, shall upon the recommendation of the teacher and student assistant team, be retained in the third grade for the ensuing school year. So.
Is that kids in the yellow, the red, the dark?
I'm going to get down to the whole explanation because there's, there's, it gets deep to who, who that is. So the state at our superintendent's conference provided us guidance on this. And they have identified as minim, the, the minimal understanding, what that looks like. And they say achieving a score on English, language, arts and mathematics or both of grade three and of the West Virginia Summit of Assessment in the standard range and is more than one standard deviation measure from partial mastery. So they have to be, does not meet standards and in the margin of error is what that standard measure of error. So sometimes depending on the test, they set the number. Sometimes it's a plus or minus of eight. Sometimes it's a plus or minus of six. Sometimes it's 10. But those students that receive that plus or minus of that standard measure of, of partial mastery, they would not be included and the partial mastery and the mastery students, the meet standard students would not be included. Anybody that does not meet standards. So we've equated that to the students that are basically more than one grade level behind, which is what I-Ready has us do intensive intervention with. So, and, and these are just some numbers. Our current first grade class, as of right now in reading, we have three students that would not meet that. That's of course not the 30 or 40% everybody is talking about. But we do have three students right now. Of those three students, one of them would get an exemption because they're special ed. So we would actually have two students currently right now that if, if their scores continue on benchmark, where they're at, they would be retained.
And I'm sure a part of your intervention is when you see those scores is, you know, do they need the IEPs or the SATs or?
Well, there's actually an intervention plan that was part of the House Bill guidance that we created about two years ago at the elementary. And that is now, that is the SAT process. And it's very specific as to what tier of those students who in and what they are receiving.
I think too, take out a person's bias one way or the other over retention. If they're going to get retained, it's got to be early. You can do something pre-K, you can do something in kindergarten, you can do something in first and second. Third, by the time they're third, probably they've, they have created a bias about school.
It's too late.
Is that kind of your old plan to retain early rather than later?
It's always that, and I am a hard sell. You're asking me that.
Yes.
I am a hard sell on retention. Just the longitudinal data doesn't always speak well to it. But I completely agree with what Mr. Price said. Early intervention is absolutely key. And so we do occasionally retain students. Every year there are a couple, it's two or three or four that we would average in a year. It's not generally more than that. But we try to make it preschool. If the child enrolled in preschool, the parent would agree because it's follow-up area, preschool. And then, and then a kindergarten and first grade certainly would be the best.
So when we come to identification, if I'm an LD student, I have a learning disability. Doesn't say I can't. I just learned, probably that's me in a different manner. So my question would be, are we prolonging testing them? Are we starting the SAT process as soon as the teacher says, Larry's not where I think he ought to be? Are, are we starting that process to figure out if I need additional help or what can be done to me, for me to keep me out of the harm's way in a manner of speaking?
Can I give you my, my guess?
Yeah.
This is what this will do. I think we do a really good job of early identifying students that need to be into the SAT. I think this will likely shorten the amount of time that they have in the SAT. I think it will get us to the decision of assessment instead of.
That's what.
Sometimes get some prolonged SAT processes because of the interventions that are taking place. We, you know, it's a marathon.
Right, well, that's what I'm saying. We don't have six months to wait on me because here's the guillotine in a manner of speaking. So we don't have time to play around. We got to do, we got to make a decision. Right, you know, if you're trying to give me extra help and, and I, and I don't necessarily need it and something else can take place, she didn't hurt me. But if you don't give it to me, I was harmed. So the quicker we could expedite, like I said, the teacher thinks Larry's got a problem, sooner Larry can get moved in the pipeline. Because eventually because of this, you're not going to find anybody to teach third grade.
Yeah, it would have.
I wouldn't, I mean, I'm, I'm bailing. I'm going, I'm going lower where there's no, where the problem is actually at. But I don't have to be accountable for it. Third grade teacher i- in reality, isn't accountable for what's showing up. It's what did or didn't happen prior to that's. But I'm, I'll bail because I'm the one that's going to get.
But with our screening process and with I-Ready, we report out and identify these kids now in kindergarten. So.
I would think I-Ready would make it much easier.
Well, and this is something that we have to report to the state too. So we report to them all of these students that are that, in that area. So in math, for example, right now we have one student. And it's one of the same students that would have faced retention. But this is what the scary part is. Not meaning to be alarmist. But like second grade, if we, if we ran these numbers of partially math, of, of does not meet standard or is one, one identified as intervention with second grade, we'd have 12 students facing retention. And that's what we can't, we can't go down through and have 12 or 15 students retain.
But it, it makes me feel better that it doesn't go into effect until, what did you say, 26? Because we have time now.
We've got time and our first grade cohort looks good, but we have to have every cohort come out the same way. So we're discussing not only early intervention, SAT process and special ed, but then identifying those kids early and, and, and retaining early. If we retain in kindergarten, you know, then they're not going through three years with a cohort and getting in third grade and you're facing 15 kids being retained. Right. So those are all different discussions. But just as the state reported in this, there could be a 20 to 30, you know, you're talking 20% of your third graders.
Right. As what we were told.
Like 27 maybe?
In, in reading, and this was based on last year's third grade class, in reading, there was 1,885 possible candidates. And that took the special students and non-English students out. That was, that just left poor old Larry John Doe there sitting there, to be quite honest. There's 1,800 of us. And in, and in math, it's not quite as bad. There were 1,417 possible candidates, so statewide. So I mean.
We were just all worried.
It also doesn't equate to reading and math. And, and, and this is why some kids will score good in reading.
Yes.
And, and not in math. Other kids will score good in math and not in reading. So it, it almost makes the numbers higher.
Right.
Because it's not if you get one, it's both. My question is the teacher shall recommend retention. And, and I'm kind of get, trying to get an explanation on what that looks like. Because, you know, we need to have an idea. But our plan is, we got this information from our superintendent's conference before that meeting. But it's, it is going to be an extremely hot topic because I don't think that we can get down and fail 20% of our third graders a grade and have them be retained. So we have to come up with a plan to, to do that. Now luckily, the class that is, that we're looking at, we're looking at very minimal things to do. You know, you can look at placement, early intervention with special ed and, and the one or two kids. But we have to maintain what we currently have in the first grade into the second grade.
Well, Wes, let me ask, let me ask you this. You're one of the best first grade teachers I've ever had the privilege of working with. You're phenomenal. But with our present reading program, you could not teach me to read. You could have me 20 hours a day, 365 days a year. And with, with phonics, you cannot teach me to read. Phonics to me, at 75 years old and two master's degrees, phonics means absolutely zilch to me. And it's not my hearing. I could hear you open the door. Well, I could, I can anymore, but I could have heard you come in the front door. But I don't discriminate those sounds. Long, a long vowel sound doesn't mean anything to me. You could, you could give me a reward, you could punish me, you can do whatever. But I would fail. But I'm a sight word reader. So my question is this, I suppose to both of you maybe. We, we got three first grades. Statistically, it says 75% of your kids learn to read phonetically. 75% will learn to read by sight. That 25% in each bracket, it isn't going to, isn't going to learn the other way. So since we have multiple grade levels, I know you can identify somebody that is, that learns phonetically. For those 25% who don't learn that way and the ones that are, are on the poorer scale, is it possible to offer, I hate to say this, but we'll say phonetic reading and, and sight words? Like I said, you're the best. And, and with me, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. It would take something else. So that's a, that's something maybe to ponder, but that, that is.
It's a way differently as kids learn.
Yes.
Well, we probably need to come and present to you sometime about the science of reading and the research that's there that we're learning from, participating in. When you purchase a reading curriculum, it does not have enough phonics. It does not have enough phonological awareness. And again, that phonological awareness is the most basic. And you can look in your data to see that phonological awareness happens with nursery rhymes and playing with sounds. It's that piece Mrs. Poole often says is what you teach in the dark. It's the reading you teach kids, but you don't show them a letter, you don't tell them A says that. It's all that before phonics. And there's just a lot of reasoning there why some kids struggle. And then we go back to those who need it five times, 50 times, 150 times. So we would be glad to come present it out.
Right, like you said.
What's happening with science of reading and what's happening. Something that's kind of new in the world with reading. I don't know if you've seen those in the elementary classrooms. So we went through a period of time where everybody was wearing a mask. And it's hard to teach children how to read when they can't see your mouth. And so there's been the development of sound balls. And how you actually, your mouth has to look in order to produce the sound. And I had a teacher who found a resource and reached out the other day. So I mean, our teachers are really digging into how can I teach all students how to learn to read?
And we still have the sight word list. We're still, we're still doing those types of things.
High frequency words is a domain.
Yeah, that's, that's still a domain. So we, but if we have somebody that learns all high frequency words, I think that our test would pick that student out. We would, they would identify a student that, that was struggling right now because.
Phonological would be very low and the high frequency would be.
Right, it would pick it out.
And the other, other thing would, would be with, with math. I know you have several programs that go addition to go to your reading, reading part. But math that, for me to be able to do higher level math thinking, we'll put it bluntly in, in that manner, I, I have to know my math facts. If I don't know them, I have to be able to plot X plus Y equals zero to be able to, to do the higher order thinking skill that says 2X plus Y equals zero, what happens to X? I, I have to be able to compute before I can, I can do that. So do we have any supplement programs that go with the math program that's teaching math facts? Because I do know that a lot of the freshmen were calculating like this. That, that means they didn't know their math facts weren't.
Well, now with my kids, I could, they had gotten away from math facts.
So.
For some of it, but now it seems like we're back.
I mean, you got to know that before you can do, can do the other. So that's my question to Mr. Price. Do we have a, I hate to say computer program because I'm, I'm not really.
I think the standard you're talking about would be fluidity. So when we talk about when we read the standards of fluidity and like math fluidity, like addition fluidity, multiplication fluidity.
God bless.
I'm talking, well, I'm, I'm not necessarily. Math standards are real simple. Standards are written in a, in a loose framework. Those are the minimum that you can teach, not max. You can teach about anything you want unless it's, it is prohibited by law, actually. And if computation, and that's another, I suppose, a way to put it, that, that's knowing your math facts. And you know, to be able to do any, any, any math in a semblance of time, you have to know those. I don't care how they, you're memorizing.
Like multiplication tables.
Right, you're memorizing them in some form. I don't care how, what you want to call it. You can manipulate and do all you want. But you're still memorizing how many, how many, two times three is six, that's two times. How many, how many sets can I take out of there? Well, that's three. But you have to know that in, information. And like I said, I know you have like three or four extra programs that go with your reading. So do we have extra that go with the math program that would help with, with that? Because if, if a kid comes to high school, was. Because if, if a kid comes to high school as an old high school principal, I'll tell you this, kid comes to my school and they know their math facts blunt and plain, I can teach them algebra, I can teach them geometry, well, not geometry, I can teach them calculus, I can teach them trig, if they know them. If they don't know them, first thing I have to do is make sure they're fluent in the other. And I've been there and done that, because I know that to be a fact. So that's what I'm saying, is other, other than, I hate to say the textbook or whatever, is there other things that you have in place to make?
Do you have some supplemental?
I Ready, that's what iReady does.
Well.
They, 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 they do fluency in iReady with math facts in iReady. The individual student would, on their, like if they didn't know their multiplication tables, it would, it would actually provide lessons for them to learn multiplication tables.
Okay. So a good thing for all the snow days we had, for the, for the packs that went home, would have been iReady that was, that was based on wherever they were at in math and reading. We provided the computers for the kids, so they would have that, which would have been.
You know, Ms. West, one thing they mentioned, and I hadn't ever heard of it before, I don't know if you've ever used it, but through the Khan Academy, they said they now have an AI tutor through the Khan Academy that, I guess they test your kid and determine what they need. I was going to look into that for Colton if I could beat him down enough, but I didn't know if y'all had ever tried it here. I guess it's fairly new.
Any other questions? Because we had to stop Ms. West dead in the middle of her speech, I think.
Well, I found a teacher at the high school that would like to come and present mastery prep with me.
That'd be good.
I think that'd be great.
That's fine.
Yeah, we'll save that for another day.
We could, we could use that mastery prep.
Well, since you said teachers, this, this is me, but it's kind of hard, pardon me, it's kind of hard for me to ask you, or even Mr. Price, what are the deficiencies? And get an answer and say, these, these are where I'm weak. The next question is, what, what are you going to do to fix those weaknesses? I, I would like to see, and the, like the math teachers and the English teachers from both schools come and present and say, this is where I'm weak, where the kid's tested weak, and this is what we're going to do to fix the problem, because that's what, that's the people that actually have, have to do it. Because I can ask you questions and you can, you can answer part of them, and part of them, you, yeah, and so.
They might be a little intimidated by that.
Well, that's possible, but they also need to be compensated, so we, we have half days that aren't, there are other things that, so give them, give them a half a day to prep and come and present, because it's not that they, if you, if you look at the state with 1,800 kids and 1,400 kids that they said were potential to get hammered, it's not, it's not the teacher, it's not the majority of the teachers that's the problem. The majority of the problem, in my opinion, is curriculum doesn't match what we're testing. It doesn't match that test. CTBS used to match it. We had a curriculum, CTPS was used in nine, nine states, it matched the curriculum. You knew exactly if, what was being done. But if we don't teach, if we don't teach, there's a difference between teaching the test. I have a ham license. I got a book that had 400 questions in it, I memorized the question, I memorized the answer, they picked out 50 of them, I passed it. That's teaching the test. Teaching to the test is teaching the concepts that are on the test. And this is a horrible analogy, but this is as close as I can come to putting it. If, you've all heard the song, "A country boy can survive." Well, and what I'm going to give you is, the country boy would be somebody that, it would be our smart kids, let's say, not Larry. They would be my, they would be my youngest son, wouldn't be me. But if I were to give you an M16 and a K-bar, no basic training, and I'm going to put you on the front line, and in the morning at 6 o'clock, you're going, you're going to attack over that hill with no training, the odds of you surviving are slim to none. Now, the people that are hunters got a better chance because they know how to use a firearm. And probably more than not, they've been engaged in a few physical altercations so they could defend themselves some. What we do to our kids, if we do not teach them the concepts that are on the test, notice I didn't say the question, I said concepts. If we don't teach them the concepts we're testing, we're doing the same thing as sending a soldier into combat without training. We're failing them. In that case, they're dead, but look what we do to students if we get them out and we're not trained. And that, that's just a philosophical part for me, but that's basically what we're kind of doing. And like I said, we're lucky. I knew it was going to be bad, but until they threw this handout out in front of me, I didn't know how bad it was.
Well, I think this is good data right here that we got there. We're progressing and we're.
We are doing better. Don't misunderstand me. We are doing better. But if you have 46% of your kids that are at, in the top two quartiles, those are the ones that mastered, there's 54% that, that are not. Now, when you were at 20 and you made it to 46, that's good, but you still got more that you need, need to be able to do. And part of, part of that, like I said, the interventions will do that, you're identifying kids. So the more help that you can tag to those that you have identified, the better chance that we eliminate those numbers. It's not easy for Mr. Price to look across his desk at a kindergarten parent or a first grade parent, or a high school principal to say, sorry, your kid didn't graduate, he flunked senior English, and you don't know your math, and you don't read real well, so we're going to try to help you out. There, there's no way to sugarcoat that. I mean, it's, it's, you can try all you want, but the bottom line is, it's, it's not an easy task to be. And when you do that, you're not sure where you're going to get out of there without being mugged or not. So I understand that. So anything that we could do to eliminate the stress that the teachers are under, and you, and I know you think I probably, I probably just, but like I said, you were one of the best first grade teachers I ever, ever knew.
Well, what the science of reading has shown us is that those of us who were trained and taught many years ago, we really didn't do it right. And so now the research is there, the brain and our educators, the conversations have taken place, and what's really happening inside children's brains. And so again, I would love to come and just share sometime a little bit about the science of reading.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that'll move us into the superintendent's report. Dr. Manning.
Couple of things. Our next meetings, just to give everybody an update, will be LSIC meetings, they'll be at the local schools, and that's just a reminder that it won't be here, we'll be setting up remotely there and conducting those meetings at the schools.
Where's the first one?
I think it's at.
Elementary.
Elementary school. I've got all this information with House Bill 3035, and I've got it all printed off if anybody wants copies of this to kind of get an idea of, you know, you know.
Larry wants a copy.
Okay. Where we stand, I can, I can make that happen. Of course, that would be generalized data, not individual student data, but generalized data, but we do look pretty good as far as where we're moving right now as the current first grade group.
I mean, I'm seeing so much improvement.
Right.
At the elementary school after, you know, fairly short amount of time, that I think it reassures me that this is not taking effect until 26, because I think by then we will have it with.
Like I said, don't take what I'm saying to be, to be nasty. I just don't want us to be in, in, in that situation. And I spent 36 years of my life in this, and I don't like where the legislature's going with things that are coming down the pike. So anything I can do that throws a shaft in what they're trying to do to public education. And the way to beat them is jack your scores up, get them up, and then they can't do part of the stuff they want to do, because charter schools and private schools don't play by the same rules we do. And if they did, they'd, they'd be, they'd be hurting. So, but you got to play with, with what you're given, and like I said, our scores are where we beat them. You can't do much if our scores are in good shape.
They're going to be.
Yeah, and, and, and one thing that I wanted to highlight that, we've had the intervention is, before this test, about a month, basically about a month.
Yeah, I mean, we have.
It's going to take some time for that, but there's some growth there, even in the middle school. You saw the middle school ELA, some of it's 124% growth, which is a good start for them. I think those conversations they're having with students are going to really help. Over time, they're, they're having the individualized conversations with the students that there are kids asking about how to improve test scores for the first time. I, I really would like to probably have a full work session on mastery prep. I think that would be the best thing to do, because there's a lot of data there that needs to be shared and a lot of processes. We talk about teaching curriculum that's focused on the same thing that they're going to be tested on. For the high school, that's SAT, and that should be our focus. And I think that this mastery prep is going to be a real game changer. With that, we have an update, our boot camp is scheduled to be on the campus of GSU. It's going to be March 4th. And that boot camp is that one day boot camp that we're paying for, for everybody. We're partnering with GSU. Right now, we're scheduled in the college ballroom where we take all of our students, they're going to be on the college campus, they're going to be hearing a little spiel from Mr. Chapman and Dr. Manchin, and then our folks.
Not this one.
Not this one, no, Dwayne. And our folks will then start training our students out in sessions for both reading math, math calculator, and it'll go down through the day, and our kids will be able to have everything from how to read the directions on that test to how to time themselves on that test. So we're hopeful that that boot camp will make a big difference in our SAT scores. Just FYI, there's a winter storm coming. I will do my best to keep us in school, but just like the flood, some of those things happen fast and, you know, it's, it's not ideal.
So, I think somebody said Braxton loses their spring break. What, what is our?
We haven't lost a day yet.
Right.
The next day that we take, we will lose an OS day, and I believe that's off of spring break. And is there another OS day built in there?
Four.
Yeah. There's two OS days we can lose off spring break.
Just wondered if.
And then we will be losing, we will be extending later after that. So we're going to try our best. You know, the, the snow looks like to me, I've looked at lots of weather reports, it's hitting at 9:00 AM. Can we get them there for half of the morning and count the day? We're going to try, but we're not going to put anybody at risk to try to get the day in. So hopefully, none of it hits and we can, we can kind of.
Keep your nose.
Yep. Because we'd like to, we would like to, we would like to, to be there. But I just had those few announcements, and like I said, next meeting will be LSIC at Gilmer County Elementary School.
All right, that'll move us into board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Chapman.
I want to congratulate our board member that's not with us today on his new addition to his family, and I wish him the best and I hope everything's good there. And then for elementary school kids, I'm pretty sure it's like kindergarten through sixth grade, youth baseball season, signups are out. You can find a link on Facebook, but that is kind of time sensitive. They can only run those signups so long because you have to get insurance and all the softball girls have to be registered at a certain time. So don't put that off. Get your kids registered for spring baseball and softball season.
I don't have anything at this time. Dr. Miller.
This past weekend, Cody and Larry and myself attended the Winter Board of Education Conference in Charleston. I think we've kind of already talked about, most of the stuff was there, but the thing that was most concerning to all of us was the, the third grade retention. And, you know, every county in the state is going to be scrambling to get things in place to prevent that. It was pretty mind blowing when they told us that almost 30% of West Virginia third graders would be held back at this point if the test scores persisted. Of course, that's not going to be the case in Gilmer County, because we're getting ready to blow it out of the water. We have an extension, the WVU Extension Office, we have a meeting tomorrow at 4:30, and I'll report back on that after, for the next board meeting. Thanks, everyone, for the hard work. I'm pleased to see big gains, and I know it's just going to get better.
Mr. Martin.
Yeah, same here. Those, those were big improvement, that's what I said. Don't take my comments to be the other way. I just, I just want them, I want them up there. I don't want you to have, you or, or Mr. Fox to have to look at somebody and say, sorry about your luck. So if I sign kind of, frightening in that, I've been there and I don't like it. So like I said, they're coming up.
Jim Brown was pretty emotional about it. He did our talk about it, and he was pretty emotional, and it got everybody stirred up, you know, worrying about failing 30% of our third graders.
I mean, like I said, that just falls into.
It's a real issue. It's not something to be taken. It's, it's a serious issue. We talked about it here.
And it falls into what, what the legislature really wants to do with public ed. Like I said, there's one way to beat them, that's get your scores up above where they ought to be, and when you do that, they got to back off. They understand, they understand home folks, home folks getting after them. So like I said, to all the faculty, I'm not, I'm not being critical. I'd do anything I could do to help. If you needed something, I'd make the, I'd make a recommendation to get it.
Yep, we're all here to help.
I just want to see everybody. I want to see them improve.
Any other comments? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second? It's been properly moved, the second adjournment meeting, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention, meeting adjourned.
Cody, I got a few things here.
Sure.